Oh, all right. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time this morning to talk to you a little bit about ransomware and what we're doing here in Brazos County to protect ourselves against this. If you paid attention at all to any of the news this weekend, you're aware that there was a worldwide outbreak of a ransomware called WannaCry that affected somewhere on the order of 300,000 computers in 150 countries worldwide. So it was a large, large outbreak. But I wanted to try to give you all some reassurances that we are doing virtually everything that we can here to prevent us from becoming a victim of that sort of thing. Do I have a clicker?
No, you can just do that mouse.
Oh, very nice. Okay. We're doing quite a few, quite a few things, including a number of devices and appliances that we have. We've got watch guard and border guard firewalls that we use to prevent unwanted traffic from coming into our network. We are using Symantec antivirus to detect and block viruses, another malware if it does get past our defenses. We're using McAfee intrusion prevention system to detect and stop malicious network traffic from coming in. Some of y'all have probably seen the iron port content filter that we use to block traffic to suspicious websites. And then we also have a Barracuda email spam firewall that we are using to keep unsolicited emails and their malicious payloads out of our, out of our inboxes, email inboxes. In addition to those appliances, we also have policies and practices in place that further safeguard us. For one thing, we're not, we don't typically allow our end users to have administrative rights on their own PCs. Ransomware and other malicious code typically requires elevated privileges or administrative rights on those boxes to execute. And so consequently, if an end user inadvertently clicks on an infected file, for example, if they don't have the administrative rights on that box to allow that code to execute, then we've thwarted that, that activity. We also, oh, I guess I should point out that even people in IT don't typically have administrative rights on their logins when we log in as on a routine basis. That is to say, our normal accounts that we log in with don't have those administrative rights. And if there's something that we need to do that requires administrative rights, we actually have a separate administrator account that we then turn around and log into. And then once we've accomplished that task, requiring those elevated rights, we then turn around and log back out of that, log back into our unprivileged account. So it's not just the end users. It, you know, we treat ourselves the same. But most importantly, we are applying updates and security patches on a routine and consistent basis. We have identified select employees throughout the county from various departments that, as a group, are representative of our entire user base, including a couple of people in IT. And those select end users automatically and immediately receive the updates and security patches as they are put out by our vendors. So as a vendor, Microsoft, for example, if they put out a security patch, it arrives on our update server. Our update server automatically and with no notification goes ahead and sends that out to this select group of employees throughout the county. The reason for that is that we want to get these security patches in place and tested as quickly as possible. From time to time, a security patch can cause problems with other software. And so we don't roll it out countywide immediately because we don't want something like that to impact too large a user base. But we do push it out automatically to a select group of people. And then once we are confident that it's not, that it's going to play well in our sandbox, or if it has some sort of negative impact, once we have researched that and found a suitable solution around that, at that point, we then turn around and push it out countywide. So many, if not most, if perhaps not all, of those that were infected with the WannaCry ransomware over the weekend, it was due to the fact that they had not been applying the security patches that had been identified and produced by the, by the vendors. So we are, so we're, we're doing well on that front. I would like to talk to you a little bit more in depth about email. Since the, since the ransomware and a lot of malicious code is circulated via email, I wanted to kind of give you some idea of what our security posture looks like with respect to email. And then I would, I think what I'm going to ask is that I'd be allowed to come back next week and give you a little more detail on that and then ask for some guidance on some ideas that I have about how we can further increase our security posture in Brazos County. But briefly, there are 4.3 million emails that come into our network each year. That is to say that 4.3 million emails annually are addressed to county email addresses. Now, our Barracuda spam firewall, on average, per year, is blocking a little over two and a half million of those for a variety of reasons. Some it has identified as already carrying a virus or some other malicious payload. Most of them it's blocking because it looks like spam that could potentially have links to infected websites, for example. And for other reasons, again, a little over two and a half million are being blocked automatically. And then in addition to that, another quarter of a million are being quarantined. And if you're like me, you will occasionally get an email from our Barracuda saying that there's an email that came in and it's been quarantined. It doesn't really know what to do with it. It looks kind of suspicious, but it's going to let you second guess Barracuda. And if your, if your quarantine emails or anything like mine typically, that's just junk or spam, then I'll wind up deleting them anyway. But that still leaves one and a half million emails that are actually delivered to county employees each year. So that's a significant amount of email that is arriving in our inboxes. And because of that, we recently undertook a campaign to try to quantify and determine what is our risk associated with those 1.5 million emails that are being delivered. And we've gotten some numbers in. And what I, what I'd like to do, I think, is come back next week and give you a little more detail on what that baseline looks like and explain to you what we're, what we're trying to do to engage the end user, to help recruit the end user, to help improve our security posture in Brazos County. But the takeaway from this is that we are already doing a significant amount of work to secure our information resources from these sorts of attacks. There is room for improvement. There's always room for improvement. And that's something I want to talk to you all about again next week, if, if I may. Okay?
Okay. Is there anything in particular that we need to be watching for, or, you know, with this ransomware thing?
Well, at this point, as we've always recommended, if you get an email that you think is suspicious, delete it. Or if you believe it's legitimate, but you're still not sure, and it's something, something you feel like maybe you need, do need to respond to, send it to us and we'll take a look at it. There is a, there is a training campaign that we've recently instituted that will give end users more tips on how to hover over links and try to identify suspicious email. And that's something that we'll talk about more again next week. Okay?
All right.
Hopefully, hopefully you won't have to tell us how to open up a Bitcoin account.
I have one, so if I got ransomware attack, I don't know how I'd pay for it.
I hope so. I hope so as well.
Thank you. Any other causes and input and our concerns? And that's presentation and, and our discussion, a recognition of Brazos County employee Walk Across Texas competition.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Sarah Mendez. I'm the Health Education Director at the Brazos County Health Department. And as part of our ongoing efforts to promote worksite wellness here in Brazos County, we encourage employees to participate in the Walk Across Texas program. And this year, that program ran from February 18th through April 15th. And we had 12 teams made up of Brazos County employees. And over that eight-week timeframe, they walked 21,705 miles, which is a very outstanding number of miles. So we continue to encourage our employees to continue to be physically active. And so our top team with the Brazos County employees was the Risky Resources, and that was Melissa Perez's team. So Melissa, if you would have your team members come up? And we would like to present them with the Golden Shoe Award.
Hello, everyone. I have some certificates of completion for them. Cindy with Rosa Lozano. And Rosa had 1,113 miles completed, and Cindy had 640, 15. Those were the top two, they were the top two. Mary Mendez, Deanita Garcia, Tony Florida, and Jennifer Salazar. And Monica Salceda is not here right now, but she was also part of our team. And I appreciate, we're so excited. And I'm the one that kind of suggested that we come up here because I thought it was like a really cool thing. So they might not want to take me out to lunch tomorrow. But thank you so much for the opportunity, and hopefully next year we could, uh...
Can you get all of us to scrunch up?
Yeah, somebody in the middle.
I'm always in the front.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And B is presentation of FQHC HealthPoint regarding services and programs offered in Brazos County.
Hello, Judge Commissioners. My name is Eric Todd. I'm the CEO of HealthPoint. And I was talking to Commissioner Barry the other day, and she suggested that I come by and give you all an update on what an FQHC is and what HealthPoint is doing in the Brazos Valley, specifically in Brazos County. So we are something called a federally qualified health center. We're privately, we're a private nonprofit controlled by a local board. Matter of fact, Commissioner Colley serves on our board. We are part of what was the legacy of Brazos Valley Community Action Agency that started in 1972, that was part of the Johnson's War on Poverty. And we kind of evolved over the ages, and we have divided to a different, now BBCA is exclusively HealthPoint. HealthPoint has 13 clinics in the Brazos Valley. We have four in Brazos County. We have 38 medical providers, 200 employees. Our annual budget's about $20 million. We serve 40,000 unduplicated patients. We serve 13,000 uninsured patients of those 40,000. We do about 134,000 visits a year. Eighty percent of those folks who are, that come into our clinics are at or below 200% of the poverty guideline. And we're doing that at a cost of about $500 per person, including their prescriptions, they're seeing their doctor, they're seeing a behavioral health specialist, or they're seeing a dentist. And our administrative costs to run our programs are less than 7%. Our services that we offer outpatient primary care. We also have one extended acute care clinic in, at our Memorial site, which is open on Saturdays and evenings as well. We have a dental clinic in Bryan College Station with two dentists with behavioral health, including licensed professional counselor. We have a Class A pharmacy that is something called, it's a closed pharmacy, meaning the only people that can access the pharmacy are the, are the 40,000 patients that we have. But it's a dynamic pharmacy. We do, we do about 200 scripts a day out of that pharmacy. And we're also part, because it is a Class A pharmacy, meaning we can run the whole gamut of any drugs that the, that the provide, the medical providers subscribe, send a script for. We're also part of two programs, one with Pfizer sharing the care, and the other is AstraZeneca's. And it's where some of their top name brands, if a person is, if we deem the person at 200% or below the poverty guideline, they can actually get those drugs for free. And so some of those drugs are $300 a month that we're able to pass on for just the dispensing fee to our, to our, to our patients. And then besides the pharmacy, we have prenatal care. We have great relationships. It's kind of interesting. The first hospital relationship we had was not with St. Joe, but was with the Med. And when Tom Jackson was the CEO, he called me to his office one day and said, you know, I really need a prenatal clinic out at our facility to assist in our neonatal program that we started out here. And he had approached a couple of other entities in state, in the, in the community before. But we went sure, and then I flew up to Tennessee to meet with their headquarters. And we worked out an agreement where the CHS, which is a hospital system, one of the largest hospital systems in the United States, is for profit, matter of fact, ended up donating money to us to, to start a prenatal clinic and a pediatric clinic across the street from the Med. Today, we occupy the third floor of the West Building, the entire third floor, about 31, about, I think it's about 30, 30,000 square feet up there. Have six providers up there. Under the R.A. program, not R.A., under the Obamacare, we were able to build a clinic at Memorial and it's 1,600 square feet, really nice facility. Like y'all to see it. Used, used Vaughn Construction and a design build and brought in an architect from Austin. It's a really, really nice building. The patient demographics of the people we serve, 30% are uninsured, 31% are Medicaid, 13% are Medicare. Some of our clinics in the rural counties, we may have as many as 20, 25% Medicare. Private insurance is 20%. And then we have state programs, state grant programs that make up the other 6%. The last page of the flyer that I gave you just shows that these are our, these are our objectives, and these are our goals and our values that we hold for HealthPoint. Just wanted to see if y'all had any other questions, just, just information to let y'all know that we are serving the un and underinsured, and we think we're doing a pretty good job. We now have, I talked about the Med, but one of our largest partnerships right now is with St. Joe, CHI St. Joe, where we meet about every other week and look at strategies to, to increase healthcare to the, to those that are disenfranchised, and also to try to eliminate unnecessary utilization of the ER and admissions, readmissions in the hospital. We also have a grant before the Episcopal Health Foundation to actually have a program that looks at our high-end users of the ER and works with St. Joe to identify those people, get them into a primary care, primary, primary healthcare provider, and then also have an extender where, where if they are elderly and they may have four or five chronic diseases, that, that is hard for them to get to, to their doctor, that we will actually go out into their homes and see them. And we're supposed to hear about that in June. And we, from what we've heard from the Episcopal Health Foundation, there's a pretty good chance we're going to get that grant. Pretty exciting. It's one of those grants that's a study, and we'll do a baseline with St. Joe. And if it succeeds in two years, then we're going to turn around and say, St. Joe, you saved, you know, $800,000, pay for it for every year, you know, going forward for $250,000 for the cost of it. So I think we're doing some pretty innovative, interesting things. Big portion of what we do is prevention. Also, this reliance that, I mean, this, this belief that the individual patient is the center of their care, and that we're just the team to support them, and the responsibility for their care really falls on them, and we'll help them become healthier and stay healthier. Any questions?
I just want to thank you for the job you do.
Appreciate it.
I simply want to add that it is an honor to serve on your board. The board and the team functions very efficiently and effectively, and you provide a great service to our community, one in which I have longed for many years. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for what you do. Okay, we will consider taking on agenda items 4313, number four is proclamation 17-021, declaring May 22nd, 2017 is KBTX News Day.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. It's discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Circled. If none. Hello? How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Let me read the proclamation and when you present it. Whereas KBTX TV started broadcasting on May 22nd, 1957, in a four-room brick building on East 29th Street in South Bryan, and has continued to serve Brazos County and the surrounding counties for 60 years. And whereas KBTX has provided counties hours of airtime dedicated to the community events and public affairs, including the Food for Families food drive, that has raised millions of dollars to help donate millions and pounds of food to Brazos Valley Food Bank. And whereas KBTX's commitment to, to responsible reporting and community involvement is a core part of their mission and continues today, their long history of reporting fair and accurate local news, weather, and sports is echoed in their slogan, "The people you know, the news you trust." And whereas KBTX provided the first local television station, the first color television signal, the first 24-hour television station, the first Doppler radar, the first local digital and HDTV programming, and the first local broadcast live in the field. To be more in-depth coverage of the community events and newsmakers, KBTX developed and produced the first local news magazine show, Town Talk, and still produces nearly 25 hours of locally focused news programming each week. And whereas KBTX has chosen May 22nd, 2017, as a date to make the community aware of KBTX and its 60-year history in Brazos County, to become aware of the commitment to providing accurate news, coverage for all residents of Brazos County, and to express its appreciation to all residents of Brazos County who depend on KBTX to stay up to date on the news that's happening in our community, and supported KBTX dedication to the community groups and causes. Now therefore be claimed that the Brazos County Commissioners Court does hereby recognize the day of May 22nd, 2017 as KBTX News Three Day. You're welcome. And here's the proclamation officially in sign.
Thank you.
I can remember that far back.
Oh, really? I was going to say, you know, I've only been a part of KBTX for two years. But I mean, I love the community, and I speak on behalf of everyone at KBTX when I say that we love what we do and love serving everyone and the needs that you guys have. So we really appreciate this. So thank you so much.
I can remember my mother watching Town Talk, and my dad watching Johnny Watkins. He was one of the other local guys that had an agricultural...
We've been going through archived video for the past couple of weeks. So it's been kind of fun looking back at, at all of that. So it's cool to know that people still remember what it was back then and kind of watching it grow into what it is today. So...
Y'all do a great job down there.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank KBTX for 60 years, and we're looking for 60 more.
Yeah, it's our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five is the appointment of Nancy Barrett to keep Brazos beautiful board of effective media.
Move to approve.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number six, payment authorization to AHI Enterprises in the amount of $644.30 for the purchase of HP toner cartridges for the county attorney's office. The purchaser is not obtained in offense.
Motion approved.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number seven is acceptance of donated cash counter for the CSPD to the county auditor's office.
Motion to approve.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number eight, approval of the following job prescriptions.
A, class...
Move approval of A and B.
Motion made second of A and B. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of treasurer's report for March 2017 and order ending 3/31/17.
Motion approved.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 10 is tax refund application for the following...
Motion approved. A, B, and C.
Motion made second of A, B, and C. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 11 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FYI 16 slash 17, 33.1 through 33.6.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 12, personnel change status.
Motion approved.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 13 is payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County in the claim number 715-5577 through claim number 715-5815. Motion approved. Second. Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 14 is acknowledgement of monthly reports submitted April 2017. Number 14 is acknowledgement of monthly reports submitted April 2017. 15, sure support on inmate population chief.
Judge Commissioners, good morning. It was a great experience for me to see Brooke Welborn on the opposite end of the campus this morning, rather than deep drill. Brooke, thank you very much. Again, I'm thankful that you're all sitting down. Our population overnight was 678.
You're treating them too well.
678, so.
You're treating them too well.
I'm a local side or not, I'm sure. So we have 67 on electronic monitoring, 21 pending. And if I might, two commercials. This Saturday, there's two events that are benefiting local entities. One is the Sexual Assault Resource Center, the Crosstown, Bible Live, Crosstown softball tournament at Central Park. The sheriff's office has a team there. Friday, Anderson is president of the board and I'm a board member, so I encourage you all to come out for that on Saturday for the day. And then Saturday afternoon at the Ranch Harley-Davidson dealership, yours truly, a week's home of volunteers to sit in a tank and have balls thrown, see if they can dunk here or not. So I encourage you to come out and either buy a Harley-Davidson or throw a ball at them and see if you can drop in the tank.
Is that the one in South College Station?
Yes.
What time are you dunking?
15:00 hour.
I'll put it on my calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Chief. Number 16 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Number 17 is conferences and input and our concerns.